I'll call this meeting to order if I could have everyone's attention, please, if you will rise for the invocation given by Pastor Che with Heritage Baptist Church. Thank you for being here, sir.
Thank you. My Father, we need you today, and we are asking that you would send your Holy Spirit before us in every decision and every step that we take today, that you would grant patience and wisdom to the decisions that are made today. Lord, these are dark times, and we certainly need the light of your Son more than ever. So would you please grant that to us? And we trust that you hear our prayers and that you are ready to bless and forgive more than we are ready to ask for blessings and forgiveness. We're thankful for your grace and your mercy that you shower upon us every day. Be with every single person, every single soul that comes into this place today, and keep us safe and in your will. We ask this in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. It is Wednesday, July 24, 2024. I am calling this meeting to order. We have all commissioners and county judge present. It is 9:07. We are at 901 Leopard, the Nuasis County courtroom, and I certify there is a quorum present. Moving on to item D, is there announcements on disclosures of conflict for anyone? If you find that you have missed something and want to do so at the time, that is fine as well. Moving on to item E, certificates of recognition. I would make the motion to table Mr. Lister's recognition to August the 7th. He couldn't be with us today, and he asked us to move that to the next meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion tables. Item number two, and recognition of the Nuasis County Historical Commission for the 2023 Distinguished Service Award as presented by the Texas Historical Commission. And we have some of you here today. Kathy?
Yes.
Yes. You, I guess I have you speaking or telling us about it. Yes, ma'am. If you go to the microphone, you're gonna have to push, yeah, pull it down.
Stand by. I hope I don't break it.
Yeah, you won't. That's good.
Can you hear me, Kathy? Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I know that several years in a row, we have received this special designation, but it is very special when you talk about the entire state of Texas, that we've been recognized. And, you know, coming back after, I don't want to mention other, so I'm not going to, but it's hard to get back up and running again. But we have done some, really, some pretty special things in the area, tried to work in preservation areas here in Nuasis County. But we, I have a team that's here with us today, and I appreciate all that they do to help make this work for this county of preserving and our history. Okay. Y'all have any questions of me?
We all appreciate you, you all very much for what you do, yes.
We're really getting, we're getting ready to do a new display in the bottom floor, and I think you'll like the, what we have, remnants of the 1914 courthouse that we hope to put up. Okay.
I think we have a certificate for y'all as well, is that, Teresa, that was brought in a little bit late. So if y'all want to come up here and do a photo, we'd be happy to have you join us.
Judge, I want to just add, we just so much, no, it's okay. We just appreciate so much what y'all do. I mean, it's really amazing. We couldn't do it without you, and the small role we play in it in providing markers, you know, is definitely a small role because y'all do all the work, and we're just very grateful for it because preserving history is so important. And some of our history isn't so good, and part of the reason you preserve some of our history is so that we don't repeat it, the bad stuff. And so I really appreciate the fact that you do everything you do. So thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for all you do.
Yes, ma'am. I also want to say I appreciate that you all try and preserve all the buildings that have historical, like the Hilltop. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Picture time.
Debbie, you want to give your camera to somebody?
Where do you want Shorty? Up front.
Okay, ready? One, one, two, three.
Thank you.
What she meant was she took video.
Can you move a little bit this way? There you go. One, two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you, ladies.
Do you have the team coming in now?
They're out there, as many as we could get.
Yeah.
A lot of them are still playing.
That's good.
Yeah, you know.
Let's get them in before we get started, yes.
You can all come on one side. You can all go on one side, usually. You can go over there with them if you want to, you can, whatever you want to do. I know y'all are, not everybody's here today.
Yeah, this is who we could get today.
Yes.
And the summer to get this many here is a pretty good deal, too.
Yeah, I know. So did the best we could to get as many as we could. Go ahead.
And recognizing the London Pirates baseball team, and Emily is going to read the resolution.
Whereas the London Pirates baseball team is led by co-head coaches Albert Amaya and Kevin Carr, assistant coaches Trey Salinas and J.R. Galvane, team manager Jeremy Oliveras, and student trainers Ava Bozen-Lenner, Nolan Chap, Nolan Chapa, and Alana Ramon. Whereas the London Pirates baseball team consists of Landon Salinas, Mason Jacob, Aiden Salinas, R.J. Oliveras, Cody Knickie, Henry Supovetta, Ricky Ramirez, Christian Oliveras, Jacob Gonzalez, Blake Waters, Bradley Terry, Blaine Line, Eric Ruiz, Max Carion, Ethan Ortega, Joseph Dotolo, Colby Budd, Connor Clary, Noah Cervantes, A.J. Valdez, Zach Tyrone, J.J. Vallegas, Ryland Freeman. Whereas the London Pirates baseball team finished the season with a 39-4 overall record with an appearance to the 2024 UIL State semifinals. This was the London Pirates' fourth straight year to the UIL State Tournament. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Commissioners Court of Nuasis County, does hereby recognize the London Pirates baseball team on their 2024 UIL State semifinals appearance and for another outstanding season.
So moved, Judge.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, the same sign. The motion passes, and congrats, guys. I know Commissioner will want to start off, so.
Yeah, and I, it's usually Coach Amaya that does the speaking, but whoever wants to come up and say something while you're walking up, Coach Carr, you know, whoever wants to do it, I just usually see Coach Amaya on TV, right? You know, we didn't, we weren't able to get everyone here today. It's hard to get the London guys here because they're out playing baseball, a lot of them are, and school's just getting started for London. They've started, but I really wanted to bring them in because, you know, this has been a special team with a special group of seniors, especially when that, I remember when that freshman class came in and everybody was so excited, and they've helped continue to build an amazing legacy. I don't know, and I'd really like someone to check to see if they know of any other team in any A that's gone four years in a row to the state baseball tournament. Maybe I'm sure in history, there's one, but that's an amazing accomplishment with, and correct me if I'm wrong, with one state championship and that, one final runner-up and two semifinal appearances, and I'm hoping I got that right. I follow you guys pretty closely. So we're super proud of what y'all have done on the field and off the field. The team GPA continues to be great, and the academics, and that's a big part of everybody's deal. We always want to recognize athletes, but we always want to also recognize how much they put into their academics as well. London's a great school district, had a son graduate there in 2021, and so I know it very well and very active in that, in that community. So Coach, thank you for being here, but on behalf of everyone, and everyone, someone else may want to speak too, I just wanted to bring you in, congratulate you, and sorry, not everybody could be here, but I hope you'll take back our appreciation and, you know, to the school district and to Coach Moreno. I know he said he was covering classes so the coaches could come today. I kind of gave him a hard time for not being here, but he said he was covering classes. Is that right? I gotta give him a hard time?
Yes.
Okay, all right, all right. Anyway, so go right ahead, and thank you very much for being here.
Well, first of all, I want to say, on behalf of the baseball team and the baseball program, thank you for having us this morning and recognizing us. You hit the nail right on the head when you said you were talking about academics and the type of kids that we have. And being at the state tournament four years in a row is just a reflection on who these kids are and what they represent, their families, the community. And the kids that are here today, they're exceptional. They're gifted and talented, and we as coaches and as teachers at London, we are just blessed to be a part of their lives. And for all that they have accomplished these last four years and last year, we're just amazed by it, and we're so proud of them. And words cannot express how proud we are of them because you said it, they've been to the state tournament for four years in a row, and that's just something that will, that's a memory they're gonna, memories that they're gonna carry with them for the rest of their lives. And last year was actually a school record for wins that we had. We were one win shy of 40 wins, so we were 39-4, which was an exceptional, exceptional season. And we're just so proud of them, and we just wanted, on behalf of Coach Carr and Coach Galvane and Coach Salinas, thank you guys for recognizing us, and we love all these kids and all of our players. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments they want to do? Any one of the team players want to come up and speak? We understand. We just, we just want to say again how very proud we are of you and the work that it takes academically and physically and everything else. We want to credit you with a huge accomplishment, and we hope that you continue to have many, many more victories after this. So thank you for being here. We have this for you, and we'd love to take a picture with you as well. Yes. Oh, he gave it to her.
Congratulations, guys.
Okay, ready? One, two, three.
Congratulations, guys.
Congratulations.
Okay, moving on to item G, public comment. There is nobody on this list that signed up. Is there anyone here who didn't have the opportunity to sign up who wishes to speak at this time? If not, then we will move on to our consent agenda. Are there any commissioners who wish to pull any item for further discussion from the consent agenda? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Item number three, discuss and consider emergency operations center voice over internet protocol project funding source. This is for the purchase and installation. Actually, we need to do number four first, sorry, because that's unallocating. Last meeting, I allocated $60,000 for this, but we're finding out that that is a lengthy process, and because of the procurement process, I needed to use COs, so I'm unallocating my ARPA money from this and using COs for this project, so.
That's what I do with mine.
Yes. So I, if you're okay.
It's the same amount, Judge?
Same amount, nothing changed. We're just changing it from ARPA money to COs.
And so you want to do four? I had questions on three, but if you're gonna wait, then it's fine. Come back to my question.
Yes. Item number four is discuss and consider unallocating the $500,000 countywide ARPA funds that was approved last week for the Emergency Operations Center and the county judge ARPA funds, $128,595, for a total of $628,595 ARPA funds to the Bob Hall Pier project. But then the second motion to this is unallocating $628, that exact amount, from the Bob Hall Pier Harvey funds and reallocating to the Emergency Operations Center. This just frees up the time constraints on the money. It is the same exact, it's an exact swap, but it will allow us to do what is much safer in the best interest after the, with the Hilltop Community Center. It is much safer, it's closer to the fairgrounds, it is much better built, and then getting our people out of closer two-harms way when they have to stay here in the courthouse during a hurricane or anything else.
You couldn't move directly to that, from yours to directly to that? Do you have to go through the Bob Hall Pier?
Because it's ARPA money and because the contract with the Hilltop is going to make it very sketchy and it's gonna push us, if we swap the money, it's the exact same amount. Bob Hall Pier is already under contract, it's moving forward. It is an exact number swap. It is no more, no less. It is, so that's, I would make the motion to unallocate my ARPA money and reallocate that same exact amount to the Bob Hall Pier. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then also make the motion to unallocate that exact amount from the Bob Hall Pier Harvey insurance money to the Emergency Operations Project.
Second, if that's a motion.
That's a motion, yes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, the same sign. The motion passes. Item number three, discuss and consider emergency operations center voice over internet protocol. This was equipment that is needed right now this year for this hurricane season and stuff. This is, and you can talk about it, Dee.
Yeah, I just want to, there is a misspelling on that number three, and it's probably my fault. It should have said video over internet, not voice over internet protocol. Basically, what we're doing is our Creston system that did work up there is aged out, and it had to have people come in to fix it, and they charged us a lot of money to do it at that time. We have a system up there now that isn't working because our large TV, which we used to do the Zoom meetings with our partners on during an emergency, has seen its lifetime. What this is gonna allow us to do is it will allow us to have video over internet, which will allow us to streamline anything that's on two dedicated laptops on all the TVs in the EOC when we're having a briefing. When we're not having briefings, we can have other things on those TV, the weather channels, our apps, or any other things that we use at the same time. We have a smart TV that was granted to the Emergency Operations Center about two years ago from the COG. It was never installed, so we're gonna install that and have a camera put on so we can see and brief with our partners during these meetings. Being a smart board, I can be up there drawing on it or whatever, and when we're done, we can download that, print it, and send it out to wherever we need to do. The microphones will stay the same. The Creston system actually manages the audio and the amplifier for the room, but we're gonna put in a ceiling microphone, and what that ceiling microphone will do is, is when everybody's at that table and you're in front of the smart board and you're having your briefings, everybody will be able to be heard. It's like having a mic on yourself, so you won't have people going, oh, I can't hear you, whatever. They'll be able to hear everybody at that table when they speak. The console, the control system that's gonna be put in is just a switch to allow us to go back and forth. Really what we're doing is, is we are simplifying it, making it much easier to use. We also, one of the good things about this is that all the codes come to us, so our IT department will be able to manage and maintenance this system. So if I have a problem, I can call IT and they're there. I don't have to call Granicus or Swaggart or somebody else and wait 48 hours for somebody to respond. We will be able to take that system and manage it and maintain it ourself, which will save a lot of time and money.
Can you motion for that or what?
Yes, I do.
I think Commissioner Chesney had a question about it, though.
No, 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 that's fine. You had to make the motion, that's fine. Just the questions, and you've answered them, so I, when we, when did we, and you may not know this, and I'm not turning up each on the spot, but we, I remember we bought this voice over system.
I think it was eight to nine years ago.
Okay. So eight to nine years ago, and are we, are we replacing all of it or replacing an element of it, right?
Just, we need to replace the TVs, or the main TV, because that one's gone. What we're doing is, is the Creston doesn't work properly now. It's already, you know, it's hit and miss in the EOC. It's hit and miss. Like, one TV will come on and then the other one won't. So we've been told it's aged out. Creston won't even come in and fix it. They don't have parts for it anymore, and they want to charge you another $100,000 or plus to put in a new system. This way, we put in a simplified system where it's just video over internet, so you're just streamlining, just kind of like what we do on Zoom calls and whatever, but it has a switch in there so that we can either run it on 24, up to 24 TVs or up to however. We have six TVs on it now, but it can grow later on if you wanted it to grow. But it's a, it's a simplified system. It's just, it's a switch mainly that allows whatever you're playing on that laptop to go on those. But the big thing is, is the ceiling microphone, because even though you have the amplifiers and the audio, it's muffled when you have that many people in the room. So if you're at the table and that microphone's in that certain place, it will be able to pick up everybody's voice, so everybody will be clearly heard.
And so what will this do as far as for the rest of the system?
Yeah, that was, I was gonna ask Daryl to, Daryl to come up and say.
Yeah, and this is where I'm getting a little out of my comfort zone in asking, but I mean, we've got this big system, right, and some, if you could give me kind of what that is and how replacing a part affects the whole, are we gonna then have to, are we gonna be looking at doing more later? Just if you can kind of go through that, I'd appreciate it, because I know we invested quite a bit in that system eight or nine years ago.
Yeah, first I want to clarify that it has nothing at all to do with our voice over IP phone system.
All of those will still work. The system that we bought a long time ago, still, it's not antiquated and end of life like on this.
It's moving forward. It is an exact number swap. It is no more, no less. It is, that's, I would make the motion to unallocate my ARPA money and reallocate that same exact amount to the Bob Hall Pier.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. And then also make the motion to unallocate that exact amount from the Bob Hall Pier Harvey insurance money to the emergency operations project.
Second, if that's a motion.
That's a motion, yes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, the same sign.
Judge, I just wanted to say too, I'm really, I think it's just such a great service to, to the county to move this to the Hilltop Community Center, as you said, the reasons you stated. It's just such, makes so much more sense. It's on a ground floor, it's inland, it's, that thing was built solidly. So I think this is, you know.
Closer to our staging area at the fairgrounds. Everything works so much better.
Well, it's just helping utilize a building that hasn't been utilized and we're trying to,
Absolutely.
Trying to renovate, trying to get it. So this is just another good way of doing that, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Hernandez, for allowing us to utilize that as well.
Yes, ma'am. Anytime.
And then going back to item number three, since that money has been unallocated and the discuss and consider the emergency operations center voice over protocol. This was equipment that is needed right now, this year for this hurricane season and stuff. This is, and you can talk about it, Dee.
Yeah, I just want to, there is a misspelling on that number three and it's probably my fault. It should have said video over internet, not voice over internet protocol. Basically, what we're doing is our Creston system that did work up there is aged out and it had to have people come in to fix it and they charged us a lot of money to do it at that time. We have a system up there now that isn't working because our large TV, which we used to do the Zoom meetings with our partners on during an emergency, has seen its lifetime. What this is going to allow us to do is it will allow us to have video over internet, which will allow us to streamline anything that's on two dedicated laptops on all the TVs in the EOC when we're having a briefing. When we're not having briefings, we can have other things on those TV, the weather channels, our apps, or any other things that we use at the same time. We have a smart TV that was granted to the emergency operations center about two years ago from the COG. It was never installed. So we're going to install that and have a camera put on so we can see and brief with our partners during these meetings. Being a smart board, I can be up there drawing on it or whatever and when we're done, we can download that, print it, and send it out to wherever we need to do. The microphones will stay the same. The Creston system actually manages the audio and the amplifier for the room. But we're going to put in a ceiling microphone and what that ceiling microphone will do is, is when everybody's at that table and you're in front of the smart board and you're having your briefings, everybody will be able to be heard. It's like having a mic on yourself. So you won't have people going, oh, I can't hear you, whatever. They'll be able to hear everybody at that table when they speak. The control, the control system that's going to be put in is just a switch to allow us to go back and forth. Really what we're doing is, is we are simplifying it, making it much easier to use. We also, one of the good things about this is that all the codes come to us. So our IT department will be able to manage and maintenance this system. So if I have a problem, I can call IT and they're there. I don't have to call Granicus or Swaggart or somebody else and wait 48 hours for somebody to respond. We will be able to take that system and manage it and maintain it ourself, which will save a lot of time and money.
Can you motion for that or what?
Yes, I do.
Second.
I think Commissioner Chesney had a question about it though.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's fine. You had made the motion, that's fine. Just the questions, and you've answered them. So I, when we, when did we, and you may not know this, I'm not turning up each on the spot, but we, I remember we bought this voice over system.
I think it was eight to nine years ago.
Okay. So eight to nine years ago and are we, are we replacing all of it or replacing an element of it, right?
Just, we need to replace the TVs, or the main TV, because that one's gone. What we're doing is, is the Creston doesn't work properly now. It's already, you know, it's hit and miss.
In the EOC.
In the EOC, it's hit and miss. Like one TV will come on and then the other one won't. So we've been told it's aged out. Creston won't even come in and fix it. They don't have parts for it anymore and they want to charge you another 100,000 or plus to put in a new system. This way, we put in a simplified system where it's just video over internet. So you're just streamlining, just kind of like what we do on Zoom calls and whatever. But it has a switch in there so that we can either run it on 24, up to 24 TVs or up to however. We have six TVs on it now, but it can grow later on if you wanted it to grow. But it's a simplified system. It's just, it's a switch mainly that allows whatever you're playing on that laptop to go on those. But the big thing is, is the ceiling microphone. Because even though you have the amplifiers and the audio, it's muffled when you have that many people in the room. So if you're at the table and that microphone's in that certain place, it will be able to pick up everybody's voice. So everybody will be clearly heard.
And so what will this do as far as for the rest of the system?
Yeah, I was going to ask Daryl to come up and say.
I'm getting a little out of my comfort zone in asking, but I mean, we've got this big system, right? And some, if you could give me kind of what that is and how replacing a part affects the whole. Are we going to then have to, are we going to be looking at doing more later? Just if you can kind of go through that, I'd appreciate it. Because I know we invested quite a bit in that system eight or nine years ago.
Yeah, first I want to clarify that it has nothing at all to do with our voice over IP phone system.
All of those will still work. The system that we bought a long time ago, still, it's not antiquated and end of life like on this, yes.
Nothing like this. This is only within the EOC on the fifth floor. And it, the Creston equipment she mentions, that's what's outdated, which is just the controlling equipment in there and it's way overkill. There was a, our previous director was working on a quote previous, before, and it was more than twice the amount that this one is. This is a very practical solution. Dee and I went over the realistic scenarios that would take place in there and before this company came in and gave us this quote. And it's only what can happen in this room. So I'm very comfortable with this and yeah, I just want to clarify that it's video over IP. They all use the network now, so that's, that's all there is to that. It does not affect our phone system in any way.
And this does allow us to grow the system.
I can't hear you.
It does allow us to grow the system and we're not throwing out the baby with the bathwater. It still has the system in the closet that's connected. We're just adding this little piece to it. But it's going to allow us to grow. If the EOC got bigger for some reason, we could grow within with what we've got here. It's, that's what we've really tried to do is just simplify it. So it's not so technical. It doesn't cost a lot to fix, but it does what we need it to do. And that's basically stay in touch with our partners and be able to brief everybody in the EOC efficiently and safely.
And that, that makes sense. I just wanted to go through that because I know we'd spent quite a bit on that system eight or nine years ago and I didn't, I didn't think it was, but I wasn't sure, so.
Well, I think what, well, you could probably say it too, but Crest, the technology has just, you know, it moves so fast that.
It's part of the racket. We get it, you know, that's how they keep making money, so. Okay.
I think you answered the question. Thank you both.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second to allocate the funds for the video over internet protocol system requested by the emergency operations center. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. I have a message to ask to bring up item number seven. Discuss and consider award and execution of the Public Health Service Agreement with Amistad Community Health Center for Public Health Services at the Calderon Building and Related Matters. Item number seven, and Commissioner Gonzalez, I think this is yours.
Well, I think this was.
Or is Dr. Gonzalez going to speak? Yes, I'm sorry. Yes. Please, the microphone is yours. I have a couple of questions on the contract myself, but go ahead.
Good morning, Judge, good morning, Commissioners. So yes, the item is about, the, we had a conditional selection of Amistad and so we have gone through and made some negotiations there on the, on the contract. And I guess today the discussion is what the points are that, on there. But overview is, the goal is to offer public health services, in particular clinical public health services, as listed there. And the other thing, just to kind of highlight too, the way it's designed is to, based on volume. So if our, some of those items there have to deal with, if we don't have a great volume, our expenses would go down.
I didn't see, and I, this contract, I don't have it highlighted for me or anything on here that to clarity that this, this contract was never, it wasn't starting until October 1. Anyway, this job wasn't going to start if it gets approved here today. And my other issue was we have a five-year agreement. I thought this was going to be, and I, and I stated this to our attorney a long time ago in these discussions and really asked for this to not be included. And I, for a trial run on something, I have a real issue with going ahead and signing a contract for five years. I, you know, do I want it to work? Yes. But do I want to be locked into something that possibly doesn't? Then I have, I have a problem with that.
Yeah, I don't think we'll be locked into anything. I think Ginnie did a very good job of putting a contract together where anybody can get out of it. They can, we can, we're not locked into anything. And it's something that it's there, and we, Ginnie made sure that it was there. And I think that's something that they worked on. So it's not like we're locked into anything. I think if something happens in a year, we can get out in a year. Something happens in two years, we can get out in two years. Something happens in three years, we can get out in three years.
I just know this county has a history of being locked into contracts that put us in binds and I have a hard time with it.
I don't know what contract you're talking about, but.
But we know exactly.
I can, I know a few too, but I'm telling, we have, we didn't have the outlets that we have now. You know, and the county attorney, he actually was the one that worked on it. So, you know, I'm just saying that we're, to me, for something like this, that it's going to provide this services and, you know, it's something that one year is not going to tell a lot of what, you know, actually we're going to be able to do. I think, you know, three years to five years is something that we need to really consider. But, you know, I mean, I don't think we should go any lower than three years, you know, but.
That's my issue with it, so.
We have our, the Amistad here that's asking to make a comment.
Yes, please.
Just to clarify, there's a 90-day no cause termination from the county side, so.
And 180 days for y'all, so I think I read or something.
120 for us. And so, and we would, you know, we would not just go to 120. We'd carry things. We're not going to drop the ball on this from a practical standpoint. But, but just, you know, I mean, this is five years, but practically, there's, it's a 90-day out for the county with no cause, so.
I just worry, and I know we have all been thinking of ways that we can utilize this building and we can do things and then in some of the discussions, and no fault of yours, nothing to do with y'all. Your contract is, you know, what you state to do. But the additional charges and the additional things that we're finding out that are going to cost the county with our separation thing is a little bit concerning to me on what the actual cost will be. And this is back, this is not you, this is back to Dr. G, I'm sorry. And I know we had lots and lots of meetings in my office about making sure to cut those costs and to make sure that this is a staggered thing, that we were going to grow with time, with necessity and value and proven numbers that show that it's, and it, I just think we have, with the county and with the county and the situation we're in, I think we have to really be cautious. I still don't know. I think there are some issues that all of us have about not knowing where we are and where we're going to be next year and where we're going to be six months from now, so. That was my concern and, yeah, I mean, I'm one vote.
And part of those discussions is, you know, making those projections. You know, we did lots of projections as far as the type of services that have been given, based on the populations there, based on the type of services the population requests. So we have done prediction and I realize they're predictions, but we have done our due diligence as far as what would be the minimums and the maximums.
Well, and, and that's why I had such a big issue with five-year agreement. I thought this was going to be a trial run, so that's my say and that's it. So somebody else may have something else, so that was my only issue.
There's one more provision that had not been discussed, I think previously, that I need guidance from the court on specifically because it hadn't been discussed, was the 5% increase annually.
Yeah, that was one of my issues.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that one too. And we have the city here too, or, I mean, I was surprised to see all of you walk in, but if you would like to comment.
I wasn't. I wasn't.
It's not in the actual agreement, it's just on your court.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Judge Scott, and Commissioners, good morning. I'm Peter Zanoni, the City Manager for the City of Corpus Christi. And this is an important item, important decision for the Commissioners Court. So we wanted to come in to talk to you, to tell you what we, what we're thinking as of today. And so before I begin though, I did want to let the Commissioners Court and the community know that we, the city, we're proud, I'm proud as a city manager, that we have a longstanding, great working relationship with New Oasis County. It's not often in Texas that cities and counties can work well with each other. And we have a proven track record of that. Whether it's on our beach maintenance program, we maintain with you over 20 miles of Gulf Coast beach, whether it's preparing for a natural disaster and then recovering from it, or whether it's providing health services. And so when it comes to health services, we have been working together with the county for over 30 years, almost 30 years, I think, three decades, in providing health services to all of New Oasis County in partnership with the, with New Oasis County. And up until recently, it was a legacy business model and this would conclude about two years of the new model that we're working within. We understand the county has the, the right to go in a different direction. We're here today to tell you our observations to date. And so a little less than six months ago, when the county contemplated going in a new business model, we began, as the county did, to see what does that mean in terms of the new service delivery model? That would be one where the city provides services just to the city residents in Corpus Christi and then the county would provide services to unincorporated portions of the county or smaller rural jurisdictions. We're here today to say we don't think we're ready. We don't think we're ready yet. It's very complex to, to separate the models in terms of making sure both sides are ready to provide service in a, in a new way, different than what we've been doing in the 30 years. We think it'd be advisable to at least give one more year in the current working model to give both sides ample opportunity to develop that new business model. I did want to remind the county that it's a, it's a complex service delivery program that we have together with the county. So it's not just clinical services that we provide. We provide together with the county for the, for all of New Oasis County. Women, infant and children, nutrition services and screenings. We provide sexually transmitted diseases, identification, surveillance and treatment. We provide tuberculosis surveillance, treatment and identification. We provide with the county vaccinations. We provide a lot more than just clinical services. We provide when it comes to public health services and the need for an advanced laboratory with scientists that can test specimen. The nearest lab from here is over 100 miles away in San Antonio. So that's something that together we operate today. So certain things that you would have to provide in the county include restaurant inspections, septic tank inspections, all those systems exist today in the current business model. So it's a lot of new development on both sides. And we're here to say that we're willing, the city is willing, to continue that current relationship for at least a year to give you, the county, more time and to give the city more time as well. We've challenged Dr. Khan's here with me in the front and Sony Perrinell, the Assistant City Manager. They've been working over the past couple of months to decouple, if you will. But we would have to consider things like when a client comes in, we'd have to check, are you a city of Corpus Christi resident? And if not, what does that mean? What's the charge for service? And you would probably have to do the same if somebody came into Robstown who, the clinic who lived just right outside this, Robstown, in fact, is in the city. So those things have not been developed yet and more time would be needed to be able to do that. And then finally, we're still working with the Department of Health Services, DISHs as we know them by. And we want to make sure that they have confidence in what we're doing here in New Oasis County. It's important that they understand what could be two new business models. I don't think, I don't think today they have a good understanding because we haven't had enough time to explain it to them. We don't want to risk losing critical state grants that could, that would impact, if we lost those revenues, everybody in this, in this region, not just New Oasis County, but the city, New Oasis County and neighboring counties. So it's very important that we have that strong working and communication relationship with the chief people there at Department of Health Services. And frankly, we're just not there today, as of today. So again, the message here today from me, the city manager, and I'm here with the support of Dr. Fauzi Akhan, is that we're willing. We're glad we're partners with the county. We have a demonstrated track record, as I mentioned. I'm proud of it because you don't see it often in Texas. And we're here just to say, if you want to consider that, we'd be willing to continue for at least a year.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here today too.
You know, I got, let me say something.
Yes.
City Manager, and I, I have a lot of respect for you, I've always, ever since you came down. You know, but I'm going to say this because I think we need to be said. Back then when you came, you were part of the fight to split. You were part of the fight to give it to Jessica Nalas. You were part of the fight and we were with you, Commissioner Chesney and I were with you to the end. Because that's what the city wanted, the mayor wanted. It's not what the county wanted at that time, but, you know, we all wanted it and it happened. So it's not that the county wanted to split, it's that the city was ready to split. And the city agreed to provide services in the county, New Oasis County area. But it's not for free. We paid for those services.
Right.
And you didn't even mention that when you were saying that the city's providing all the services that we are paying for is $1.7 million.
Right.
You know?
Yeah, that's correct.
It's the hospital district is paying for that.
Yeah, that's correct.
So now, we take it, it was split, you know, that money is going mostly with us, right? Because they're not going to provide services for the county outside the city limits. But if somebody walks in a door from Corpus Christi or the city limit, we're not going to charge them because they're just from Corpus Christi or city limits. We shouldn't, because if it's a health clinic, you got to take anybody who walks in there.
Right.
So I hope the county, I hope the city does the same thing. You know, I don't think you want to turn anybody away because he lives in Robstown or Bishop or shit. But you know, but I just, I just want to make this clear that, you know, we were there with you.
Yeah.
When you needed us, right?
Right, and we're still here with you, Commissioner, and as he's mentioned.
And I appreciate it, but I think we've come a long ways. I think this should have happened maybe a month ago, we could sit down and talk about it, you know, instead of, instead of coming to the meeting where we're going to take a vote and here we are talking about it and trying to change things, you know? And I know you're invited to be here, but, you know, I'm going to tell you right now that we all were there in the front lines. We all voted. Everybody in the Commissioners Court voted. 5-0.
Right.
To split. We all voted 5-0 to go get a contract. We all voted 5-0 to go get primary, primary, primary care. And now we're coming back because somebody doesn't feel like it's the right thing to do or because they don't feel safe, because they think, we're talking about monies. We will never spend the $1.7 million, you know? So, but, and then you talk about, and we say about, we don't want to, what, five years? We don't want three years or one year. We'd do $21 million for six years for the doctors and they want more. So where's, what is, where's the justification there? That we can do six years, 21 million, and we can't do 1.7 to provide services to the needy, to the poor, the uninsured? And this is what, this bothers me because we've been working hard at this, seeing we split it. The last time, we knew what to do, twice we gave them an extension. At the last minute, the city comes to us and we gave them an extension twice. So now a year, I don't think it's fair for the community in the western area of New Oasis County that doesn't get served and can't come in to the health district to be left out again. And we're a shame on us here and if we don't care, we can, we can care about, all the services are in the spawn. We can care about that, but we don't care over the services in Bishop and Awaluze and Banquete, you know, and all those colonias. We don't care. This is what's happening. Two days a week is not getting the services done. I'm sorry. But, you know, and we've talked about that before. So, you know, I think it's time that people know this, where we at with this thing, isn't it? You know, and we talk, worried about money, worried about 1.7 million when we gave away 21 million? Or the hospital district did? Nobody fought that.
Right, yeah, Commissioner, so just to, just to phrase it a little bit differently. We, when we were working together two years ago or three years ago or so, it wasn't to split and part ways, it was to develop a new business model. That's what the votes were on. We knew that the business model that existed, that kind of grew over time, was outdated. It was a, it had numerous flaws to include, nobody was in charge, because two people were in charge. And that old adage, when more than one person's in charge, nobody's in charge. We had a poor utilization of public health dollars in terms of efficiency and effectiveness to provide services. We had extremely, extreme low employee morale. My, the employees that I would speak to each Friday didn't want to come to work. And I love coming to work and I told them, you all need to love to come to work. And so, and that's changed. The, there's been tremendous improvement. So it wasn't to split. The votes were not that. The unanimous votes were to say, we acknowledge we need a different business model. And that's what we created. And it's, and it's the county's right to go and as, as is the city's, I suppose, to go a different way.
And isn't part of the, part, not to interrupt you, I know you're explaining your thing, but isn't part of the question that we have before us today, too, and the reason why maybe postponing this a little bit longer might not be, and, and Dr. G, I think you can agree to this, is, is this grants that are intertwined? That the division of those and there's not a clear path on how we divide that and go forward and
Right.
and the acceptance of that, too?
Yeah, that's, that's definitely one of them and we haven't had enough time, uh, to make sure with the state that they clearly know.
And I think we've said the same, Dr. G, if you will confirm, I think you've checked on a lot of those and, and we're in the same boat. Uh, we're all trying to do the, the right thing for our community and citizens here. Uh, no doubt any of that, that's not disputable. But there is a problem with these grants funding that is intertwined with the city. And if we separate what portion we get or what we go after and what they keep and, and when they are together. I think the last extension we did was because the state asked us to do that as well because of this convoluted system that we're all in, yes.
Yes, Judge. So, and as you mentioned, uh, we have had frequent conversations with the state in order to describe what, what is the plan, what is the plan on the county side and how to move forward. From the understanding there, too, when it comes to all these contracts that the state provides to, for local health departments to do these public health services, uh, the way they're currently written, they are all encompassing for the county, in some instances, all encompassing for several counties. And so, uh, as far as the state's concerned, where, where, where they really wanted to know just, you know, our side of it and the city's side of it was to see if it, if they do have to divide the funds for certain projects, how would they divide those funds? Either way, at least for the county side, one of the things, because we would be a new entity as a new public health unit, we would still have to show them that we have the infrastructure and capabilities before they come back and provide that for us.
Do you have confirmation from them that they feel like we are ready to proceed forward?
Well, that's why I'm emphasizing that.
Since they asked us to wait, yes.
That's why I'm emphasizing that, that we'd have to demonstrate that we, uh, they wouldn't be providing us that funds immediately. This is, this, they have to see that how, how we are working the first year. Uh, and after that, if, if we've.
Would the city lose those funds, then?
Uh, if they would lose those funds, if they request, they wouldn't lose the funds because they've already, they're already in existence. What would happen is if they request to change the scope of work on those contracts to no longer be countywide and just citywide, what the state would have to do would to adjust the funding based on the population. Now, if they would leave them as is, meaning that if anybody can still come from wherever, then they continue receiving the entire funds, uh, until we come back and show them afterwards as a new public health unit that we're capable of doing these things and what our population that we're serving. Because we have to show them the numbers as well. So that's, that's how their, the discussions have been with the state as far as how to move forward. Now, as far as some of these contracts, too, as I said, some, some of them are several counties. So the state would see that very irregular, that you offer six county service and then just not a portion of your county. So that's, that's just.
Then we would all lose. Nobody would get it, probably. Yes. That's, that's my fear, yes.
It's always a, it's always a way that we're going to lose anywhere. Lose the 21 million dollars, too, you know? I mean, that's, but we took a chance, you know?
That, that was the, that's the answer to my questions. Is anyone else, yes, Commissioner Chasing?
Thank you, Judge.
Mr. Mottis, please.
First, I wanted to, uh, uh, address, um, one of Commissioner Gonzalez's contact or comments. We couldn't do this a month ago because we just got this contract. And we just got the contract in our package this time around to look at and to start analyzing. So when I started doing my diligence and I met with Dr. Gonzalez and he presented what he was going to present, that he presented to us on the budget. He didn't tell me he was going to ask for a $40,000 raise for himself, but he did show me the chart that indicated all the things that he was going to propose as part of this health unit. And I asked him then, are these things that we are statutorily required to do? Because the county operates different than the city. The city's by charter, the county's by statute. He candidly and honestly told me that, no, most of the things on the list were not statutory obligations of the county. I've been very clear, whether you like my position or not, that we need to be moving more towards, and this is at the judge's lead, she's actually implanted it in my mind, that we need to be worried about things more so that we're statutory obligated to do or statutory able to do than some of the things that, that we do. And, and I met with Dr. Gonzalez, I shared that with him, I told him I had concerns about this. And so, very candidly and honestly, when I was doing my diligence after I got the contract, after I was very concerned about the budget proposal made by Dr. Gonzalez and seeing what this cost was going, I did reach out to Dr. Khan and, and, and I'm not hiding that at all. I have the obligation as a county commissioner on a countywide project, on any project, to do my diligence. And that's part of my diligence. And Dr. Khan was extremely responsive and, and spent a good amount of time talking to me about this. And, and, um, and so I appreciate that they're here today and, and making this presentation. I have many of the same concerns that the judge has already articulated, so I won't go back over those. Um, I, I think the, at the end of the day, um, no matter what accusations are made by people and they don't like other people's positions, we are all here trying to do what we can to best serve our community and the citizens that we serve. I, I am not convinced, and I was very candid with Dr. Khan yesterday when I said this to her, I'm not convinced that, that it, this still isn't the way the county should go. I'm just not convinced that it is today as we speak, based on the uncertainties, based on the grants, based on this contract, based on the cost being way more than I anticipated it being. We, I had originally thought it was going to be somewhere in the $750,000 range and we'd be able to give back money to the hospital district. This is, this has already ballooned to Amistad's contract. And let me tell you, Amistad is the greatest group as we could ever pick. So this is not anything related to them, but if the cost is the cost, it's over $920,000, plus the cost to administer the program, plus the cost to, to renovate the Calderon Building. Those are all taxpayer dollars. Uh, the cost to administer this program includes Dr. Gonzalez's salary, his assistant's salary, his request for a, a new clerk salary. So we've already pushed this thing over 1.2 million dollars and we haven't even allocated the cost related to all the, so, all the other stuff that we have to dish out. Someone has to do septic, someone has to do, you know, those things, some of those, I didn't see some of those, uh, you know, allocated either. So again, I'm, I'm not sure I don't want to do this. I really am not. I'm just not sure I do. And, and so, the city manager's request, and, and, and I really appreciate that because, uh, and I don't mean to, to elevate anyone at all, but I don't see the city manager show up at these meetings a lot. And to me, what, that's not a negative of the city manager. That shows the emphasis that the city is putting on this by saying to us, hey, look, let's try again. Because let me say out front, I, what I, what Commissioner Gonzalez said, I agree with. We weren't getting enough county services in the outlying areas and that is still an issue that we absolutely have to address. But before we throw the baby out with the bathwater, shouldn't we at least try to sit down with our partners of thirty years and see if we can work that out before we recreate an entire wheel? And that's what we're doing here. Dr. Gonzalez is a very capable man, but he's never run a health unit. He's never put together this kind of thing. Uh, and so to put that on someone who's never done it is, is maybe a little unfair to begin with. I, I, I think that the city is making a, a great goodwill gesture. And, and let's, let's do talk historically a little bit about that. Because when this started, back when, the city council did vote to withdraw from the health district. We were all caught off guard by that. We were bothered by that. And as Commissioner Gonzalez talked about and Peter talked about, we got together and we said, well, hold on, before you'll do this, let's, let's look at a new business model. We were able to work together. We asked them at that point to come back to the table. They, to their credit, did. It was a thirteen to one vote to recreate this model. And I, I don't think it's been unsuccessful, but I think it needs tweaking. And, and again, I'm going to say that two or three more times because we have to get more county services and we have to figure out a way to do that. But I think there's a way to do that, sitting down with our partners and, and trying to be efficient on this. And I think we owe the people that we represent that opportunity. Because everybody can talk, and I don't, I'm, I totally don't agree with the five-year deal. I, I don't agree with the five percent increase. But at, at the end of the day, the real deal here is we need to serve best. Because once we undo this, it's not going to be able to be done, again, i- i- with ease. In other words, once the city moves on down the road, and, and here's another thing. They, and I'm not saying they are, but they may have to lay off people that should, could have been some former county employees that we sent over to the city in good faith, for the city health, county health unit. I wouldn't want that to happen because we're, if we're pulling out 1.7 million dollars in that partnership, that could affect employees over there and that's the last thing any of us want to do because we all worked very hard to make sure that they took every one of our employees and that they kept them and they've done that, to my knowledge, and they've lived up to their promises. And again, this is a big deal, a big, big deal. And it's an important deal and it's the most important thing we're going to deal with today. No offense to anybody else on the agenda, uh, because this is public health and it matters. So I, I'm just, as I said today, I'm just not ready to move forward with this plan because there's so many unanswered questions. Do I think we ought to delay it a year, as the city manager suggested? Maybe not, but maybe six months is reasonable. I don't know. If it has to be a year, great, but maybe it could be a shorter time because we need to know if we can work these things out and get down to the, to the, to the brass on this. So I, I, I don't really want to vote on this thing today, up or down. I'd rather just delay it and judge, I don't want to quash the discussion, but I would like to be recognized later for a motion to table before anyone else does. Because if I make a motion to table, then we can't discuss it anymore. So I don't, I don't want to do that right now, but I, I'm, I, I want to hear, because I want to hear from everybody. But I do, I would like to be recognized for that because I think putting this back is, is the best thing for our citizens. It is going to help the citizens the most and, and I would hope that we would have that opportunity to do that.
Before discussion purpose, I'll, I'll make a motion, we do three years.
Well, I mean, it, okay. If that, and see, that's exactly the kind of.
On discussion, we got discussions.
We've already had discussion.
Mr. Mottis asked for the floor next before all of you guys, so let's, let's hear what he has to say then. I appreciate that, yeah, for discussion, yes.
So are we in discussion for the motion or? Yes, is that an act of motion to recognize?
He made the motion.
Okay, motion on the floor, so just.
You have nothing on that or do you want to say?
Well, yeah, I'm, I, I'd like to kind of go back to the general discussion we had on, on what was presented first. But, uh, I, I guess it can tie in, it doesn't really matter. Uh, the, the, the main points for me here today, and, um, I'm trying not to go first because, one, it takes me a while to process everything that's been delivered. And two, I want to hear the great perspectives that are being brought up here. So that's always how I try to approach big issues. And, and I agree, Commissioner Chesney, I mean, we don't have the city manager walk into Commissioner's court very often. And when it does, it says to me that, uh, this is an important issue. This was a, a thirteen elected officials in favor, uh, of this decision, uh, two years ago. It's hard to believe that it's already been, uh, that long. Uh, Dr. Khan was just announced in October of '22 to be our, our, um, our public health director. So it's, it's been a process and we, in the end, have always tried to focus on, uh, county services, those that have been underserved. And I think that that's what is being proposed here today. That's the biggest issue. It's the biggest issue that, that, that affects me and my constituents that are out, uh, in Robstown. This facility that, that's been renovated, Calderon Building on the, on the, uh, south wing of the building, is devoted to helping improve healthcare and healthcare access for those underserved and those have limited to no transportation, uh, availability to get into the city of Corpus Christi. By the way, both these facilities are in precinct three. Uh, it's just kind of coincidental, but, you know, the, the city county health district is, is there in precinct three as well. So I, I see it, you know, from the perspective of where I represent, just kind of the good fortune of that both those facilities lay within the boundaries. But this is a bigger issue, like one of the commissioners mentioned, this is a countywide issue that's important. But for me, it's what are the services outside the city limits? Keeping employees, I think that's a very good point that we haven't talked about or considered, how, what kind of impact this has. I, I don't want to downplay, uh, Amistad either. I mean, Amistad is a, an important, uh, community partner. And, um, it's, it's been a while, probably close to a year now, uh, since I was invited to go over there and take a tour, um, and visit the facility and listen to Commissioner Gonzalez and, and the team at Amistad, the administration of Amistad, talk about their vision and look at, at what's, uh, what's being proposed. And, and here we are. But in the end, when, when you have a partner, I, I, you know, I put this in terms that are easy for me to, to understand and relate to, is if a partner came in from my precinct, the only two cities I have are Robstown and Corpus Christi. So I put this in perspective, if someone from the city of Robstown were to come in, the city administrator or someone like that, or the city mayor, uh, with that kind of standing and would say, we want to work and continue, to try to find a relationship to continue. For me, that, that's, that's a game changer. That makes a big deal to me. I, I would suggest that had Mr. Zanoni not come in today, that I would just proceed because I think overall this is a good project. I don't know if a year is what we need. Uh, I do want us to take a little bit more time to look at this. But I don't want to handcuff us either just to say, you know, we have to have this decision done by today. If there are still a lot of issues that we need to discuss, then, then let's work it out. Let's continue to have that, that engagement. But I don't want this to, to tarnish what I think would be an excellent partnership and maybe there's an opportunity there that could be utilized that maybe the city county health department, working together, could really focus on, um, residential, or I'm sorry, on, uh, rural needs as well and maybe perhaps through a partnership with Amistad. So that's kind of what I'm looking for today, is to, to take a pause, uh, not to say no to this because I do believe strongly in the concept of this. I do believe that this will serve many underserved in our community. But also to sever a partnership that we've had for so long and the fact that the city manager is here today asking for further discussion, that goes a long way in my book. That, that just does. And so, um, if, if, if this is an item that we can table a few months and continue conversation, I would much rather not do that. I don't want to see the budget being changed one way or the other. I don't want to eliminate anybody on the city side or on the county side. So, you know, it's, it's, I guess it's a push, but I think a push is okay when, when we have an issue that's so complex like this. And it's not for, for, um, denying the work that in the efforts have been put by Commissioner Gonzalez and others into this. You know, we, we put a lot of, just to put it in terms for me, we, we worked on a project for ARPO that I was really thought that was going to work well and then had to get the bad news that it didn't qualify after months and months and months of putting into investment on that, on our staff's side and, and on my side, and be told that, that it didn't work. So these kind of things happen in public service. I'm not saying today that it has to die, but I do support tabling this so that we can come back and have further discussions, continue our discussions with the city because I, I feel that is so important. I've, I've never initially felt that splitting our partnership was a good idea, but the fact that the city is here today to say that we feel that we must look at this new business model and try to make it work, uh, I'm, I'm not going to deny that. I can't because a partner is asking to continue the partnership that we already have. Now, if that falls apart, then we obviously have a means and a, a valuable member of the community that can step up, an organization that can step in and, and fill a lot of those roles. But the, the funding, the grant issues are a bit concerned as well that I didn't write down, but just recalling what's been presented. So I, I don't want to pick it apart and justify, but plain and simple is when the city manager walks in the door, asks for a continuation of discussions, I'm going to defer to that, plain and simple. Done. Thank you.
The, the motion on the floor is to amend the contract to a three-year agreement instead of a five-year agreement. There is a motion and a second.
Excuse me, Judge?
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
I'd just like to say that I wish the city manager would have walked in six months ago, okay? And I do support Commissioner Gonzalez. He, if anybody has ever worked so hard for the rural areas, colonias, has been Commissioner Gonzalez, especially on health. And myself, uh, being out there talking to our constituents, they like the idea of being able to go to the Calderon Building. And also I remind you that we did spend, put a bit of money on the, getting the Calderon Building ready, okay? But I wish Commissioner, uh, Chesney also, since it's a countywide, you know, area, uh, project, I mean, he chimes in and tells us his feelings. I wish he would find a common sense to tell us why we shouldn't have a restaurant. why we shouldn't have a restaurant on on the pier that's going to get blown down every time we have a storm, and it's not even insurable. I wish he'd have that kind of common sense. Thank you.
Be happy to, Commissioner. Anytime you're able, ever here, if you were ever here, I'd be happy to.
Say something on this issue.
Commissioner Gonzalez has the floor.
Uh, city manager, do you have something you want to say? I saw you stand up. Uh, sorry, Doc, you want you got something to say too?
Okay, yeah, thank you. Just one one important reason why I'm here now is because next Tuesday, uh, we we I am going to be presenting the city's proposed budget, and so that speaks Commissioner Gonzalez, who you and I have a great working relationship as well. It is somewhat of a surprise that I'm here at the last minute, uh, but it's because we're worried. That's why I'm here, because I have to present the budget next Tuesday, and I've been working with the team with Sony and and Dr. Khan for several weeks now, and it's more apparent than ever that we're not ready. So that's why I'm here. It's a little bit, it is unusual to just show up at the last minute, and nobody likes to work in that manner. But to rush into a a decision and a judgment that could impact the community is is why I'm here. It's for the community's benefit. Uh, it's more apparent than ever as we get to that final step of next Tuesday is when I have to present the budget. And in the proposed budget right now is the elimination, I I don't know the exact numbers, twenty, is it more than twenty? Twenty-one, twenty-one positions that we would be telling next week, you have positions eliminated. And we do have a reduction in force policy, and so the goal would be that everybody is placed somewhere else. But I can tell you, you know, we don't have so many nursing positions available. We do have vacancies, and so of the positions that we'll be recommending for reduction, we're pretty confident most of them can get placed, uh, but we know that health is a is a very unique niche in in our city, where we have twenty-nine different lines of business, but only one public health department. So it's it's hard to place some of those specialized employees. So that's why I'm here today, because we're on the heels of having to make a big recommendation to the council, uh, to twenty-one employees who, as Commissioner Chesney said, we made a pledge to them that we would bring them over and we would, uh, make sure they have employment for as long as they wanted to, as long as they were performing. And now we might be telling them next Tuesday, well, you know, all bets are off at this point. So, um, the timing is, I would admit to Commissioner Hernandez and Gonzalez, it doesn't seem appropriate necessarily, but it's it's because we're just we're to the point where we know we have to do something next Tuesday. Uh, I'm worried as a city manager, more so for the community, because I don't think we're ready. And so I I just wanted to add that, uh, Judge.
Thank you. Commissioner Gonzalez, you had.
Go ahead and give it.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner. I I just wanted to highlight it because one of the things that's also discussed is what was the the budgetary fiscal side of this? And this is part of the concern as well. Uh, you know, if if the idea is to even just push back six months, that would definitely increase the the budget proposal that we currently that was presented on on Monday. Uh, the budget proposal was meant to, I guess, the working the working plan for everything was how to how to provide these services at a lower cost, at a more efficient cost. Uh, and so I just wanted to highlight that, that if we, even if we don't change for a year or six months, that budget costs will go back to the the where the value was at, it was around two million. Uh, so that saving, that that amount that we were saying that we were not going to utilize, which was a six hundred forty-five thousand, uh, we would probably have to use it after all. So I just wanted to highlight that because that is one of the talking points of when it comes to the budgetary side of it.
But also, the other talking part was about affecting services and and the growth and we whether both of us are ready and no one is going to be harmed in the process. It sounds like there's a lot of questions on whether we're ready to affect our community with these kind of changes.
And I I I think the best voice for that is this for on our side is is our contractor, who has been in several meetings to see, are we ready, would be to see what they think of.
I I have no doubt Amistad's been doing this and doing it well. We we all speak very highly and know that portion of this no and no way, shape, or form would be impacted. There are many other facets of this separation that will create departments and people and employees and things that that I am afraid the county's not ready for. Yes, that that's my fear. It had nothing to do with Amistad and their capability, ability, and excellent work, excellent reviews, please. I think that is unanimous across this court up here, totally, yes.
Well, you know, it I mean, I'm really, really kind of upset at what I hear up here. All of a sudden, everybody wants to jump ship here, you know? Uh, and we're not talking about partnerships here. We're talking about an extension, extension partnership. And if you're talking about partnership, then you want to do it forever. You want to talk about extensions, that's what we're here for. It's it's an extension, it's not a partnership for, you know, I think you want an extension for six months, three months, whatever it is, and we've done that already twice, you know? And nothing's come after that, nothing's come to us to say, hey, wait a minute, you know what? We need to continue another six months, and let's sit down and talk about it, right? So, uh, I you know, this extensions and extensions and and, you know, and then I hear monies, you know, worried about monies. One point seven million is what we're working with. You know, we're never going to, we're not going over the one point seven million for services that we're going to provide to people in the rural areas that they need it. It's a need, it's not a want. So if it's too much money, maybe we need to take three million away from the twenty-one million we gave away and put it on this side, or twenty, take three million from the pier, put it on this side, you know? I I just I just don't see, I mean, I I voted for some things that we're going to to move forward and other things because, okay, I say, okay, I'll go along with that. We we maybe we do need them. But when it comes to services, when it comes, maybe we're maybe we're not mandated, but are you trying to tell me that we're not going to serve our community because we're not mandated? We're not going to serve the poor, the sick, the indigenous care, the ones that need it? You know, it's not a need, it's not a want to need, you know, and 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 the jobs. We're losing jobs too. I think we might be losing jobs too, I don't know. So everybody's losing jobs. But if you're going to pay the employees money with the monies we have for the one point seven, then really not paying them from the city money, you're paying them from the one point seven. So one point seven, that would be our our budget, you know? And even with those things that we're talking about on the contract, you know, it's it's we're never, you know, we're never going to go over the one point seven that we talk about. You know, I don't care if you bring over the, and and we've talked about, you know, the the inspectors, the for public health, the sanitation, and it's still not going to be over one point seven. And you never were over one point seven. But the other problem we had, you requested five point one point five again. That's when the the whole thing started to snowfall and say, well, you know what? We just really need to get to split. But you know, I mean, I I'm going to, I'm going to just, I hate to do this, uh, uh, city manager, but you know, I'm I'm just, I'm just being open with you because I I feel like I can do that because I we know we 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 bought some battles together, right? And some budgets together, so, um, but I'm just, I'm just saying, this is not, to me, we're not telling the people in the western area that we want to do something for you, want to take care of you. And you might not feel like that up here, where it doesn't feel that, that we are are really mandated or commissioned to committed to to help those. So why is the city doing it? I mean, so why are we doing it? I mean, we're not, we don't have to, we're not mandated to have a pier either, but we have a pier. We're not mandated to have a restaurant, but we have a restaurant. So but we have one because, and I don't want to go into that, but we have one. So to me, a restaurant versus ser- services to the indigenous and the poor, man, how can you compare that?
I will let me also state, I don't think anyone here is saying we don't want to help the people out there, no matter what, even if this gets pushed, the city is still providing those services right now.
I'm just telling you, I'm just telling you what we heard today, and you see some of the things that were said, and there's other ways, to me, it's it to me, it's already a done deal. It's a done deal already, something that was already probably already talked about. But, you know, I'm just saying that this time, at this point, I don't think it's fair that we go out for bids, have a contractor, and all of a sudden you want to extend. And after we selected a contractor, you want to extend, and we we offer bids on primary care, and we're getting ready to select on the primary care. So why are we doing all this? I mean, is anybody saying that? Why are we doing it?
That's, I think what we're saying is, we feel like some of it maybe was rushed and not thought through enough.
No, you were part of it too, Judge, you were part of all along.
Judge, can I?
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Chesney. And then I'm going to call the vote. The vote on the floor is about changing the contract from a five-year to a three-year. I would like to get that vote done, and then if you don't mind, Commissioner Chesney, I'll let you have the floor.
Well, I was just going to say that you're giving us no choice but to vote. If you're if you're asking for a vote.
This is the amendment to the contract. This is not the contract, this is the amendment to the contract.
I mean, I don't, but I I don't.
A tip, yeah, just from five to three.
Okay, I I mean.
So then you can do whatever you want.
I I said I was against it. That's that was my biggest problem with this was the five years, and I thought we were going to try this for a year. That's the reason we kept our relationships going and wanted to work so well with the city. I wasn't sure we weren't going to be coming right back.
So you're saying, Judge, if we do it for one year, we don't do the extension?
I I didn't mind having a one year with Paso, and I told the county attorney that when I went over this contract, I was not going to vote for this, that if you had a one-year trial with maybe an an options for two additional years, I understand you put a lot into a business and come forward, but I can't vote for this right now with all the information that I have. Too much is up in the air and not clear.
Judge, could I just ask before you, because the only thing that's on the floor is a motion.
To amend the contract.
Right, but I need to, while there's still a motion on the floor for discussion, I would like to finish before we vote, if that's okay, because.
Yes, that's fine.
And I don't, so because there's a couple of things, Commissioner Gonzalez said that I want to clear up. He said, well, we might be losing jobs too. I don't I don't want the county people, county employees to be scared by that comment. There is absolutely zero proposal on ours to for any county employee to lose their job. Commissioner Gonzalez alluded to, we might be losing jobs too. That scares people. No, there is no proposal on the table. There's been nothing said ever, except by you just now, which scares people when people like us sit up here and say things. So there is no proposal, there is no proposal on the floor. Please, can I finish, Commissioner? I let you talk. There's no proposal on the floor for any county attorney or any county employee to lose a job. So let's be there clear on that. Number two, what Commissioner Gonzalez said was, extension, extension. This this, what I heard the city manager say was, he's asking for an extension to see if we can have a long-term deal worked out. So this is not just, you know, yes, it was, we're not ready, and the county can do whatever they want, but it was also, let's see if we can work together and see with this extension if, A, we can get ready, or B, we can work something out between the two to better service the 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 part of our county. And if I misunderstood you, Mr. City Manager, please let me know, but that's what I heard. So this isn't just another, let's delay. It is delay because I I I don't think we're ready, but it's also delayed so that we can go sit down with the city and utilize that time to see if we can come up with a a better part of a long-term partnership that we've had for thirty years, that we just created two years ago, and to just throw it all away right now when we're not ready, in my opinion, is is tough as well. So I just wanted to make those clarifications. I I'm, I can't vote for the amendment either because I don't know where we're going on the contract, but I I I never agreed to anything, I didn't know we were going to do a three or a five-year either. So I I can't vote for that amendment, but I'm, I don't want to be casting a vote against the project yet because I'm not ready to. All I want to do is delay it, so I'm going to vote no on the amendment because I don't think we ought to be going three or five years. I think if we're going to do it, we ought to do it one, but I think we ought to delay. So I just wanted to say that because that's the motion that's coming up, and I want to make sure it's clear that I want to vote against this amendment is because I I think it's too long and because I think we ought to delay. So thank you, Judge, for the opportunity to finish and clarify that.
Yeah, I want to say too that on the on the time, I mean, I I would hate to vote against anything for it. In fact, I feel more inclined, I mean, the number's the number. I mean, it just was just thrown out as as an option. I don't think it it sways one way or the other. My my thing is that we were given an ask, albeit a a last, last second, last minute ask that I feel that we have to honor and have further discussions on. But I did want to get some clarification, um, as we're talking about the the term of the, I guess, of the of the length of the contract, i- if we can look at section two point three, and this is for some clarification for me, extent of services, so, um, so services will be provided at eight to five and at least one day per week until six P M., right? So this is a big change in what we originally had, correct? Right, okay. And then the mobile service is something that we did not have before, but that we, as a county, have supported, and now we have that option as well. Is that that correct?
The mobile services too, we we did have, we currently have two times a month that the contract is suggesting going on a weekly basis.
There there is so much good to this. I mean, it's not like this is a bad contract or that the time has been spent incorrectly. I think the investment that's been put into this is is a lot of thought, a lot of investment. I agree with Commissioner Hidnandis about what Commissioner Gonzalez's passion is. I just, my thing is, we're asked to have a continuation, and I don't see anything wrong with that because both entities need to really figure out what does this, how does, what is, are these implications mean, you know, for public health, for the entire community, right? Not just the city, but the county as well. And so that's that's the ask. If the ask was anything other than that, I probably wouldn't be in support of it. But because you're here and you're asking for that continuation, that's why I would agree to a table, right? Or to an extension of discussions, however we want to word it, or whatever length of time. Like I said, I'm not so crazy about a year, but let's make it shorter so that we can get this resolved quickly, right? Maybe a matter of months rather than one full year. But that's where my my thinking is on that, but not in any way, shape, or form, I think this is bad. The 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 awarding or the contract of this would be bad. But the fact that we have this request, I I feel like we have to do our due diligence in finding out what does that look like for for all taxpayers because we're all impacted by this. And you've heard loudly, I think, the concern about, um, services to the rural parts of the community, and that has to be continued, and we must, uh, honor that because that is a desperate need that even we know even in our discussions we've had, even for people that live outside of Robstown are still going to be impacted, those that have transportation issue, whether it's Robstown or Corpus Christi, it's still going to be difficult for some to get there, but just moving it out to the western part makes it a little bit easier for some, uh, but that's still going to be a challenge. But, um, thank you for letting me clarify on that, uh, section two point three.
I just like the clarification. Dr. Beckerman, can you come up to the, we talked about a while ago about staffing and and more staff. You you're ready to go with staffing and everything else according to the contract, right?
We will be ready to go for with staffing, but we have not hired people because obviously we're waiting for the contract, but we have people in place. And a lot of the services that that are in here are not just from new hires in Robstown, right? It's it's connecting them within a a network when it comes to medications, when it comes to help with transportation, when it comes to other kinds of care navigation and things like that for all the areas, you know, from the island to, you know, you know, to Awadulsay, right? So so that, staffing-wise, we can be ready, you know? And I'm more than happy to work with with anything that the the Commissioner's Court is is doing. We're 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 honestly, this is, we don't make anything off of this, this is just a service. And we would like to, just as everyone's talking about there, make sure that healthcare is looked at outside of outside of the city, that we're we're getting out there. You know, the contract says once a week, our goal is really three times a week to be in a small town by partnering with schools, by partnering with community centers, so that we are finding things where people are, we're bringing them in, we're identifying diabetes, we're getting them connected with care. That's that's, you know, the big purpose of this, and that's what we want for the community. It it doesn't even have to be us, but we really want this, want this for the for the community.
I have a question also, since you're talking about the contract and this too, because I remember I asked our county attorney, there was an issue with, it wasn't clear that you were open five days a week out there. Did they change that and clarify? And that was one, one of the things that was a problem with us that they had or the comments made by the commissioner on not being open every day, and people can't get used to the hours, they can't come. I believe in the contract, when I read it, it said something about you would close when you did these mobile clinics or where you were going to be. Is it going to be open five days a week every day? I wanted to make sure because you can't have a business open or a service open, and people get tired of coming in that day you're closed or something. That was one of the issues that we had with the other.
That is very true, very true.
Set hours, set dates.
Set hours, set dates, but even, you know, we, at one point, we're, you know, we're out in Robstown already. We started pediatrics, it was twice a week. Well, that was kind of hard, you can't start it, you know, a certain certain number of days a week. So having staff at the clinic and having staff in the mobile unit, and the way that we're trying to do this efficiently is being able to flex other. And the way that we're trying to do this efficiently is being able to flex other Amistad staff, which is why you see some of the part-time pieces in there, right?
It just brought some other question that I had asked the county attorney that initially wasn't clear in there that I wanted clarified, didn't they? Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so you'll, the way it's done is, and again, looking at it as written is, how can we get all these great services out there? How can we connect people with care and, and, and find the people? You know, cervical cancer screenings was a big, to be able to do mobile cervical cancer screenings, we're going to find cancer before it becomes a big problem. These are some cool things that, that are done mandated or not. And we're, we're happy to, to go to the, to the level that you want us to be going to out there. But those are where some of the part-time pieces fall in. There's some fixed costs, which is, you know, staff that are, that are there for that. And we have, since we have a bigger pool of folks, part-time people go out and do special services and, and, and reach all the areas, uh, reach all the areas of the county with it. So if that answers that. And one thing I mentioned on cost too, I just, and I did confirm it's a 3% increase per year. And the only reason for that is because salaries go up at least 3%. You know, we're, we're probably, you know, and in fact, I, if anything happens, we eat some cost on that because, you know, salaries for MAs went up 7% one year. And, and, but, but that was just to cover the regular inflation, to be honest with you. It's not, again, it's pretty much a zero, a zero net contract. And we just want to make sure, and our board wants to make sure that we don't, it doesn't become a drain.
Thank you.
But from a service and a mission standpoint, we're here, love working with the city, love and working with Dr. Khan. They're wonderful communication and, and, and great services. And so we're happy to, to, um, work in what way is going to be best for, for county.
Thank you. We appreciate that very much. So now, the, is your motion still on the table for the, to change the contract to a three-year contract? Uh, we have a motion and a second to amend the contract.
Do you think we can do, we do a year, can we be able to move forward?
Well, we did that with the jail services. It's like, yeah, it was like, and came back. I, I mean, it's your contract. So I, I think, given in light of the information, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be discussed. But your motion is to change it?
Yeah, I can present my motion to go one year with a possible two years.
Options.
Option.
Second.
He's going to rescind his motion to the three years on the contract to go one year with two years of option years.
And this is just on the amendment?
Just on the amendment of the contract, yes. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign.
Yeah, Commissioner Hernandez.
Hernandez was the second, yes, uh-huh.
Judge, I'd like to make a motion to table the item for six months with direction for the county judge, county attorney and city delegation to work together to either get us ready to split or to work out a long-term deal with specific instruction to improve the county presence or to, 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 excuse me, to improve the health district presence and services in the, outside the ETJ area of New Oasis County. Then that would be my motion to table with that direction for six months.
Second only for discussion, I, I'd like to see it a shorter term. I mean, we're going to know for less than six.
Well, they wanted a year, I was going less than a year.
I know, I know, but, I mean, everything's in place. We, you know, a lot of work has been done. I think we'll know relatively short time, whether it be six months or four months. I think the shorter shows that we understand the importance of getting something ratified. And then if we need two extra months, we can add that on at the end. But let's try to give ourselves a quicker turnaround on this so that we can have this resolved before the end of the year, four months from now. I was counting on my fingers. So that puts us into November, so we can take action before the end of the year and be ready by the start of 2025 at the latest. If we say six months, then it's the new year and then it's just, I, I'd like to see something shorter. Now, if we figure out, once we get started, that we need more time, then let's bring it back for more time, right? We can always add, add an, an extension to that, to those discussions. But I think four months sends a message to everyone that, one, we, we want to get this resolved. If Amistad is ready to go, which they are, let's not have them delay much longer. And then the city and the county, we'll, we'll know pretty soon what we can have make. But I'd like to see that as kind of like a middle ground to be able just to, to, to push us through this issue faster. I mean, it's, is, I, I don't want to kind of negotiate here since I'm open with the city manager, but I mean.
No, I'm okay. I'll, I'll accept that as an amendment to my motion as long as, and that would be, I would say, maybe through the, we're out of August, September, October, November would be four months. So that would be sometime in December to bring it back.
I would say November, but whatever.
Well, because you've got, we're already out of July.
We have one beginning in November.
It's the end of July, tomorrow's.
We're not going to be.
So August, September, October, November, so it'd be, it would be brought back in December.
Back in December, okay.
That, I'm accepting that amendment to the motion to table with everything else stated as well. And, and I'm, I'd be happy for Amistad to be in those discussions too because they're, they do a great job, so whatever. But I'll leave it as that for now.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The effective date for Amistad is October 1, correct?
Right.
We're tabling it, we're pushing it now. Yeah, so it's not effective, yes, okay. Sorry. She was wondering, how do we do that? Yeah, understand, Teresa. We've tabled it a couple of times and, and understandably, this big issue, we want to make sure that we do it correctly when we move forward and it sounds like there's still some issues. So we have a motion to, amended motion to table this for four months and, uh, work on solutions between all of us to make sure these things are covered, whether it's grants, division, or make sure all the people still have services. All those in favor say aye.
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 We have three ayes and, and unfortunately, I'm sorry, but I think there's serious questions that need to be answered and I didn't get answers today. So, thank you. Moving back, I want to bring up item number six because I see Dennis is here and some of the judges have stepped out and I appreciate y'all being, I was going to bring you up first to help you out, so sorry y'all came at another time, but I hope this isn't inconveniencing you too much. And discuss and consider the TIDC Mental Health Public Defender Grant Funding Extension and Statement of Grant Award and Related Matters. This is, and she, Dennis has some excellent news for us and I did receive a letter confirming this information as well. So I'll let her tell you and the, what's going on. Thank you, Dennis.
Good morning, thank you, Judge. And Edwin Colfax from TIDC is on Zoom, just in case you guys have any questions I can't answer. But yes, the good news is that our original two-year startup grant, the $3.6 million grant, was due to expire at the end of September. And TIDC has voted to extend that until we exhaust all those funds. So they've extended it through September of 2025 and we anticipate that we would spend it down sometime in this next fiscal year. So they also moved into the second phase, which originally would have been the county paying 20% and TIDC paying 80% during this next fiscal year. But what would happen is instead the county will only pay 20% of whatever is left and TIDC estimates that the county's percentage would be around $85,000. Now then, going forward, this is the part that confused me a little bit, but the, the terms of the grant were you were to get the benefit of the third year being only a 20% contribution. And since that would not start until sometime later in the year, they've agreed that you would get the full 12 months, no matter when it starts. So if your 20% starts next July, you would get 20%.
Next July?
Yes.
Yes.
Then it would carry over to the following July and then the 40% would be till the next July and so on. And Mr. Colfax has explained to me that what they would do is whenever we run out of those funds, that's when the county's match would start, they'll basically average. So instead of having to figure out 20% for six months, you know, they'll average it out. It might be 30% for the full year if we have a, that 12-month period.
And I apologize, we never connected, Dennis, and I'm sorry for that. That's my fault, my schedule got crazy. That was my kind of main question was, would we lose any funds? And it sounds like you've gotten that addressed because
Yes, sir.
we didn't start at the right time and we were worried about them starting too early with the 20% because, you know, it took a while to get operational. So that, that was my main question. That's a great relief, to be honest, because I was really worried we were going to lose some funds and.
Me too.
Yeah, I know. So thank you for getting that cleared up and, and I'm happy to meet with you if you still need to. If not, then I, I, but again, I apologize for not connecting with you.
Yeah, no problem. I just wanted to be sure I was prepared for any questions you had.
That was my main one, so.
And what I've handed out is just a real brief summary, just for those of you who weren't aware of what we did during the first two years, how we did get going. We are fully going now. We are in the courts every day, we're at the jail every day, seeing clients and taking care of cases. We've been appointed to, I believe, over 1,800 cases so far and we have closed over 1,100 of those. So we have about 650 pending. I checked that yesterday, of course, it changes every day. And a good chunk of those are the mental health cases, which as you know, was one of the, the main reasons for trying to do this so that the county could establish more streamlined ways of handling those cases. So far, I think that's, that's happening. We're becoming experts in the, the mental health law. It's deep, but we're learning and, and having a lot of great success. So do you guys have any other questions about the grant paperwork? I believe there was also a resolution included from the judges, the board of judges.
Yes, that's included. I, I would make the motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion.
Sorry.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes and thank you, Dennis. And, and you've been very good at connecting with my office as well and keeping us informed of what's going on and we really appreciate that. And we commend you, all of your team, everything for what you're accomplishing there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge. And I want to thank Judges Mederi and Hasset for coming up to support us. And we also have Chris Adler and Rosanna Mushel from our Oversight Board here today.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yes.
All you got to do is bring Chris Adler, I'm good.
And it's good. It goes easy. Moving back to item 3A3, I received a message that I believe that we were incorrect by $1,300 on the total of that. So the, the motion needs to be amended to allocate the $56,919.78 for the emergency operations.
Is that your motion, Judge?
Yes, it is. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. So moving on to item five then, discuss and consider approving the selection of Turner Ramirez and Associates for Architectural Services for the Emergency Operations Center renovations. And I'll make the motion to select them for that. They are on our approved list, so.
This will be here or be at the hilltop?
At the, at the hilltop, at the hilltop, yes, sir. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Yes, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes, thank you very much. Moving on to item eight, approve method of procurement IFB invitation for bids for the Calderon Clinic upgrades and authorize purchasing agent to publish a notice. This is with precinct two ARPA funds. I'll make the motion to approve.
Well, hold on, we just.
This is not for that, this is on a different, just to utilize the building, it's on the big conference room, right?
It's approved in May, you know.
Oh, this is not, I thought this was.
No, this is not for, this is on the conference room there, right?
Oh, okay.
Commissioner?
Right.
That big room, yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes, did you second that, Commissioner Gonzalez? Yes, thank you. Uh, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Moving on to item nine, discuss and consider the selection of Hanson Professional Services for the City of Robstown Multi-Purpose Facility located at 401 West Ligestrom Boulevard. And this is with precinct three ARPA funds for engineering services for the multi-purpose facility. Commissioner Hernandez, this is yours, I believe.
I don't know if we, the court needs any background or just a motion to approve?
I'll second that, yes.
Background if needed.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hernandez, I was a little quick on that one. Item number 11, discuss and consider upcoming Commissioners' Court meeting dates and workshop dates and related matters.
Did we table ten, Judge?
Oh, sorry, I have it tabled. I, um, it's my, um, item and I am asking to table indefinitely until I can get with the electeds to make sure they have buy-in because this does not work unless we all do it the same for all of our employees. So table indefinitely is my motion.
I, I, I'll, I'll second it, but it, it's a.
It's a great concept, but I've had some, some questions raised and some conflicts with that. So, and I don't want to move forward until I have all electeds understanding and buying in and agreeing to this too. So, um, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Now, moving on to item number 11, discuss and consider upcoming Commissioners' Court meeting dates, workshop dates and related matters.
I don't have any.
Nobody has any. Moving on to, um, Public Works, item number one, discuss and consider the current budget expenditures to date, emergency repairs to date, additional items used to reduce the budget, budget deficits and funds needed through the fiscal year 9, 2030, 2024 and understanding that the funding requests come directly from our general fund. Yes, right off the top of our.
Good morning, Judge.
Yes, good morning.
Judge, we are here today to request for the, um, additional fund for our, um, emergency repairs that's still, you know, uh, before the budget year. That's, um.
And the total for those, the list?
It's 229,000, 830, 229,833. We can round it off to 300,000 maybe. Just in case there's still more emergency repairs that's coming up.
And I, I know a while back, there was a transfer to purchase some equipment for another department. In hindsight, you wish you hadn't done that. You transferred some money for the equipment purchase back. Don't have it in front of me. Do you have that, Teresa?
We moved it from the building budget to purchase.
Teresa, in the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. One, I don't remember the item offhand, I'm sorry, but.
We moved it from the building purchase.
Right, you moved it from, uh, the building fund to purchase to, do y'all remember?
Tractors, lower, something, two, something.
The only, the, the thing, the thing with that, that we are all short, uh, Judge, because from the very beginning.
Cleaning, yes, yes. And, and I pointed that out in our budget hearings, our workshop, yes.
2022 and 2023. Two years of no allocation for the janitorial. That's why we were short for that, you know.
And is there a reason why if it comes out of their budget, we don't allocate the money in there for the janitorial?
We had the janitorial in there, but at the time when we did the budget, we were under a, a bid request and, and proposed bids that we didn't have the true amount of what the funds were to be, be coming in. And we kind of projected the funds based on what we had done in the past and when they came in, they were significantly higher.
I, well, we talked to them and I thought they dropped their services because they knew and they charged us even higher than the year before.
We actually, when we did, we had the, before the, the bid came out, our, our, our budget was very, very low. And when, working with Macon, working with, with the Public Works, we kind of estimated what we thought the contract was. When the bids came in, they were significantly higher, so we were definitely underfunded.
Do we have a comparison of what we paid them the year before and what we paid them then this past year? Yeah, do you have the amount? You can just state it up there, you don't have to bring it.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you though. I appreciate that. Yeah, do you have the amount? You can just state it up there, you don't have to bring it. Yeah, thank you, though. I appreciate that.
The last janitorial, the just, the, the last janitorial allocation was only two hundred and thirty-two thousand for a whole year, for, for a whole year, for a yearly services.
For this year, ending September?
For, for, no, in twenty twenty-one.
Oh, okay, for the previous year.
Twenty twenty-two, when the, when the new janitorial services came in, it goes up to seven hundred sixteen thousand yearly.
And then we, after that, this year, what was budgeted in there?
Yeah, this one too, although we have that little savings, it's still short for six hundred and thirty-nine thousand. There's only a hundred twenty-five thousand that they allocated.
They only allocated a hundred and twenty-nine, and the
And the two hundred and thirty-two, it is, you know, for the whole
Three hundred and something thousand on a six hundred thousand dollar bill, yes.
That's why it's short, actually, year after year, for three hundred and something.
Just, we, yeah.
Yeah, that's really like, kind of like
Well, I know I talked to them personally as well on cutting services and cutting back the cost and trying to keep them, they wanted to keep the job, and I told them, but I wasn't aware that they didn't cut that much. I never go, I don't remember the final, I guess it was after budget, or y'all got it and I didn't see it or what, but I apologize for that part, yes. Go ahead, sorry to interrupt you.
That's why we are really short, year after year, Judge, it's already the two years that we are really, no money yet, you know, for the budget.
Last year, did your department end in the negative as well, in the buildings, or are we not dedicating enough? How did you purchase things? I know this year, I've kind of brought it to the attention and requested that anything that's over your budget and you're allocated in your department, and you can't, you've got to come here and ask for additional funds, because it comes straight off of the
We were just, you were requesting it through the visa with ID before, that, yeah, we are short of that. And then there was never been, you know, action in anything that, you know, they're gonna replace the money. So what we really did, even if we're short of last year, you know, we kind of like, all those emergency or projects, you know, we kind of like, just pushed it to the next year, but then what happened is getting pushed and pushed, it getting us more, you know, short.
This is the correct way to come forward in the year when your budget is empty, and just from now going to Teresa, when there's a zero balance in there, she's not, you know, supposed to be finding money, that has to come from the Commissioners Court approval. It doesn't come from just open-ended checkbook that you just keep doing. So this is the way we do it, I'm glad you're here today, and let's see what we can find for you.
What we are thinking before, because it got, it got approved, it got approved through Commissioners Court about the janitorial services.
After the purchase is done, when you have something, so, yeah.
Yeah, we were really thinking that they, they have to allocate the money to the budget.
Yes.
So, but
But this is, I mean, you have, you know, the rest of a week left of this, and then August and September, two more months, and, and that is a very important department, that services, if things go down. So I, I would hope that we're looking hard at those asks that are their needs and not wants, and requirements that we need to keep functioning, so that next year possibly, we can work on the allocation to that. But right now, this is not to just do fixer-uppers or things, this is at the end of your budget and asking for additional money. They need to be absolute needs, and I, there was a request on something that was an emergency, and later we found out that was an emergency. I just want to clarify that these are actual emergency, actual items that are necessary, and if you get the allocation, the allocation to add to your budget, that you itemize those and prioritize those on your list as well, and not spend all of it down, with knowing that a, a week before budget ends, you might be out of money again, yeah.
But the thing is, Judge, within this year, it got really impacted us with the, with the elevator. Yeah, it's not
That's what I'm worried about too, going forward, is why I said we have to plan for things. I think one of my conversations was, Mr. Pimentel was, with all the elevator issues that we do have, why we don't have, since they're so hard to come by, these parts for these elevators, why we don't have at least a spare set in a department, in a facility, you know, obligated to the county, even at the store, that when we pull that one, they replace that, knowing that when you need these, it's not what were we down for so long? How long was that time that we were down on? Six months in the deal?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
If we had more than one, that would have been critical, and there's, we just can't afford that, so I, I hope that those things are taken into account. MOUs are made with those companies that provide those parts for those or something, but we need to plan a little bit better for things like that, yeah. I totally understand where your budget went to, by all means, yes, yeah. So you're asking for two hundred and fifty thousand today?
Yes. Two twenty-nine.
Two hundred and twenty-nine.
Right, and part of those funds can be reallocated, not come from general fund.
They can come from capital, or what are they?
Right, we have a, like, the Keach Library, that's Fund fourteen, so that amount can come out, because there are funds dedicated for the, the fairgrounds. And then there's like about sixty thousand that's in here for juvenile. We can probably check with Homer to see if maybe that can be offset through state dollars, because they're getting ready for year end, they end at the end of August, so that might be, can be reallocated. And if we pull those two amounts out, that's a hundred and thirty thousand, which means that we need maybe a hundred thousand from general fund.
And are these, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'll second that for discussion, yes, go ahead.
Are you making a motion for, to do what Teresa just said? Is that what your mo- motion is?
The hundred thousand?
Or?
Or the two hundred, I mean, you still have the rest of the year, but two hundred and twenty-nine is what they were asking for, something.
Two twenty-nine, now, if we can get it, we'll get it.
Okay.
I mean, and, but still, even if you pull those
Right, but if you want to be, we need to be kind of specific, so Teresa made a suggestion, do you agree with that, and we want to allocate some of that money over there?
We got it, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
The juvenile, of course, we'll have to verify with Homer if he's okay with putting that into state dollars, but the, the Fund fourteen definitely will come out.
Approving up to that amount with those coming out of that, if they are available through different funding sources.
And some of these, and I'm sorry, are, are some of, can COs be used for any of this, any of this?
Probably so, Commissioner, so I'll check that funding as well.
Well, I was gonna say, I, I was gonna make a motion to allocate fifty thousand dollars of
Whatever we can reallocate elsewhere from general fund.
I was gonna make a motion to allocate fifty thousand dollars of precinct four COs to this as well, because I know he's, some of this is work on projects in my precinct, so I always wanted to make that as well, and try to stay away from more of the general fund if we can, as long as the COs qualify, so
So then a motion, amendment to the motion?
Well, I, we can, I don't, that's what I was trying to, I was trying to be specific, right, I was, that's what I was trying to, I'm not trying to So, Commissioner, can we amend your motion to include that as part, or do you want me to do it separate, or how would you prefer that?
What do you want to amend?
So Teresa had a suggestion, and then I was gonna add fifty thousand from precinct four COs to help, because of the, I know he's, he's put some of those, that money into precinct four, I, I would assume, so I don't know if we needed that as one big motion, or if we need to
It's over two, two, two hundred thousand plus fifty thousand from here?
It's two twenty-nine minus what Teresa said, minus what I said, which would leave a balance of
About fifty K.
About fifty K, so
I made my motion to that.
Okay, so
Is that okay with you?
You want to list that for Kara, so that we've got it, so that we have it, good for her, that was a little confusing.
Right, and then fifty thousand from the general fund to cover the deficit in Public Works budget.
Unless someone else wants to
The remaining, uh-huh.
Okay.
I appreciate all the hard work y'all do in Public Works, and thank you all very much, and I, I know sometimes we get caught up in situations.
Yes.
Try to keep a good, close eye on that, please.
So we have that motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign, the motion passes. Thank you very much, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Item C one. Approve the budget amendment number ten for fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four. Commissioner?
There's, so there's only one small request for budget request item number ten, and it just comes from the county attorney, pardon me. She had to pay some overtime when, uh, one of her employees left, and there was some transcript that she required, which are not normal for, for function. She agreed to remove some of the costs from the office supplies, the, the, the funds are there and available, and I submit a budget change of order ten for your approval.
So moved, Judge.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign, the motion passes. And approve the, we, I'm, I'm making a motion to table the quarterly investment reports to the August seventh meeting. We had a committee meeting, and we're lacking in a little bit of something, so we'd like to bring it up again.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to table this item to the August seventh meeting. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. I don't know why I was confused, I thought that was last week's. D, human resources. Discuss and consider the Nuasis County stop-loss insurance renewal and approval of the proposed rate increase and recommendations from McGrith Insurance LLC. And I will state that option one, staying at our same current rate, is the suggestion from those that were on this, working on it.
That's the, that's the recommendation?
The recommendation, yes.
I would make that motion, or second it, whatever you want.
I'll make that, if you'll second it, please. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, the same, the motion passes. Item two, under, discuss and consider moving the ARPA-funded truck driver one position from Enland Parks Department zero one seven zero to Senior Community Services Department four one nine zero zero. And Edward, do you want to explain this one? What, what this, didn't we just put that in there not too long ago?
Correct, Judge, we just put it in the wrong location, so
So we just, when we voted on it, we put it in the wrong department?
We might have given you the, the wrong department number, so this goes to the community services. They'll be delivering meals and also delivering the mobile medical unit.
You need a truck driver, is that a licensed position that you need a truck?
It's a Class B CDL, believe it or not.
Wow, okay.
So.
So it would still be funded with ARPA, but assigned to?
Yeah, yes, yes. And is this position already filled? Do we have someone in there?
No, we're trying to fill it, so, we're working with Delmar.
I don't know what that was, is somebody on speaker?
We're working with Delmar to get some of, one of their drivers out of their driving school.
Okay, thank you.
I want to put some delay. What we have with the personnel report? What's the status on that?
I will have that in the next Commissioners Court meeting, sir.
And that's not pertaining to this, this item right now, though, yeah, okay. But we don't have, we have a motion and a second for this to clarify and correct this from the Enland Parks to the Community Services Department?
I didn't hear you make, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you make a motion.
I was asking if we had a motion. We don't have a motion yet, yes. I would assume this is
So moved.
Yes, thank you. I was, I wasn't sure whose item this was, so I was trying to give them the opportunity to do it before I jumped in, yes. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, the same sign, the motion passes. I don't believe I have skipped over anything, so we should be moving on to executive. It's like executive session, public notice, y'all correct me, anybody, if I need to go back to something that hasn't been done, I assume. We've got it all. Executive session, public notice is given that Commissioners Court may elect to go into an executive session anytime during the meeting to discuss matters listed anywhere on the agenda when authorized by the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, chapter five five one of the Texas Government Code. To the extent there's been a past practice of distinguishing items for public deliberation and those for executive session, the public is advised that the court is departing from that practice and reserves the right to discuss any listed agenda items in executive session when authorized by law to do so. In the event the Commissioners Court elects to go into executive session regarding an agenda item, these section or sections of the Open Meetings Act authorizing the executive session will be publicly announced by the presiding officer in accordance with the authority of Government Code Vernon's Texas Code, section five five one dot zero seven one, five five one dot zero seven two, five five one dot zero seven three, five five one dot zero seven four, five five one dot zero seven four five, five five one dot zero seven six, five five one dot zero seven eight six, five five one dot zero eight seven. The Commissioners Court will hold an executive session to consult with the attorneys, including matters related to litigation, deliberate regarding real property, prospective gifts, personnel matters, including termination, county advisory board, advisory boards, security devices, and/or economic development negotiations, and other matters that may be discussed in an executive session. Upon completion of the executive session, the Commissioners Court may, in an open session, take such action as appropriate on items discussed in an executive session. Item A today is consult with the county attorney regarding approval of settlement agreement disposing of Frank Zegari's civil service grievance case and all claims associated with this grievance, Texas Government Code five five one dot zero seven one. Item B, consult with the county attorney regarding offer of settlement from Sarah Longoria's attorney on civil service grievance case and all related matters, Texas Government Code five five one dot zero seven one. Item C, consult with the county attorney on legal matters related to two zero one nine DCV five four dash zero four dash F, John Scott Fleming versus Nuasis County in the two hundred fourteenth District Court of Nuasis County, Texas Government Code five five one dot zero seven one. Discuss and take action. Item D, consult with the county attorney on legal matters related to the May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four demand of Isabel Herrera and related matters, Texas Government Code five five one dot zero seven one. Item E, consult with the county attorney and outside counsel regarding legal matters related to trial court case, cause number four seven zero four, Nuasis County, Texas, Appraisal District versus San Patricio County, Texas Government Code five five one dot zero seven one. Item F, consult with the county attorney on legal matters relating to cause number two zero two two CCV dash six one one six three dash three, Manuel Mata versus Nuasis County in the County Court at Law Number Three, Texas Government Code five five one dot zero seven one. Item G, discuss and consider grievance zero three one four two four dash one Bradley Hudgens, Hudgens versus the District Clerk Department, and that would be Government Code five five one dot zero seven four. Correct, Jenny?
I don't believe notice has been given to the employee under oh seven four, is that correct? Mr. Slay? Okay, so if there is a discussion, we can go under oh seven one
Okay.
and determine
We can't do anything about it, but we can at least discuss it. So discuss and consider the grievance with Bradley Hudgens versus the District Clerk Department under five five one dot zero seven one. So it is eleven thirteen, and we are going to executive session. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, it is 118, and we are back from executive on item A. I would like to make the motion to approve the settlement agreement with Frank Isagiri for his civil service grievance and all claims associated with the grievance. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Do we need to articulate the settlement?
Yeah.
Jenny, right?
Do you have, okay, so is that, was that sent to you for?
This was sent to me for the motion, so it didn't articulate any details of the settlement. There is no monetary award.
No monetary award?
Yes.
That'll be a resignation instead of involuntary termination. The separation report will be changed to honorable discharge. Isagiri will dismiss pending grievance and not pursue claims associated with the grievance, and Isagiri waives right to have, to any filed, unfiled, past, or pending grievances based on the actions prior to the termination.
So, did we have a vote? I know we had a motion and a second.
I did hear you miss.
Modus, yes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Moving on to item B, and Commissioner Modas, I believe you have a motion.
Yes, Judge, I make a motion to reject all offers and direct to continue negotiations.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Item D, I'd like to make the motion to deny the May 31st, 2024 claim of Isabel Herrera.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Item E, Commissioner Gonzalez.
I'd like to make a motion to approve engagement with Enos Kier for appellate work related to trial court cause number 4704, Nuasis County, Texas, ETAL versus San Patricio County, Texas, in the 135th Judicial District Court, Refugio County, Texas.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Moving on to item G.
G, is that mine?
Yes, Commissioner Chesney, sorry.
Motion to refer the case regarding Bradley Hudgens to the Nuasis County Attorney's Office case under Rule 8.01 of the Nuasis County Personnel Employee Manual.
Second, the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Do, that's all of our executive meeting. Do we have any adjournments in memory? I have one. I don't know if anybody has.
I have two, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Are you ready?
No, go ahead.
Yes, I'm ready. This is in memory of Jared, Jared Dale Hunt, and for those of us who knew him and know his family well, whether you were in the sport fishing community or the livestock show, this was a beloved family, beloved kid. I call him a kid because he's younger than any of us up here, but Jared Dale Hunt, beloved by all who knew him, joined his heavenly father on July 15th, 2024. Born September the 7th, 1998, Jared was the shining light of parents Jeff and Lisa Hunt, brother Carter, and sister-in-law Emily, cherished son, cherished son, grandson, brother, uncle, nephew, cousin, and friend. Jared touched the lives of so many. His infectious smile, his boisterous laugh, glowing personality, and unwavering optimism endeared him to all who met him. Always ready for new adventures, Jared lived life to the fullest. He accomplished much, and this is extremely a long one, but I'm going to, and impacted many during his fleeting time in this world. He brought so very much joy to those all around him. A 2017 graduate of Cow Allen High School, Jared was voted Mr. Congeniality by classmates. He earned his bachelor's degree in agriculture business and a minor in occupational health and safety from Texas A&amp;M University College Station in 2022. Jared's hard work and dedication to his studies was a testament to his drive and perseverance in achieving two major goals, his prized Aggie ring and his degree. Jared's Aggie spirit shined brightly as he carried it in his heart, embodying the values of his alma mater and upbringing, loyalty, respect, and community.